Good evening, Ms. Perdue.
Hi, Dave. How are you?
Doing well. How are you?
Good.
Ms. Kenneth, thanks for coming out tonight.
Thank you very much.
Welcome, Ms. Reese.
Hello.
Microphone works. Thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Hall.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks for joining us. Mr. Navarette.
Hello, sir.
Just as a reminder this evening before we start, we are going, we are streaming this meeting as well as the voting meetings each month as we are online. So we will be streaming it on YouTube. That information is up on the district website where the connection information is. So I just want to make everybody aware of that. And, you know, the streaming process starts before we get to get moving on this. So. Back with everyone.
It looks like we have everyone. Doctors, everyone, ever you're ready to record. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the August 18th, 2020 work session of the Math Acton School District Board of Directors. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcasting. Given the need to conduct this school board meeting in a virtual environment, the Board of Directors required members of the public wanting to comment during courtesy of the floor to pre-register by 5:00 p.m. today. By way of attendance, we have all board members here this evening. Recognition of guests and scheduled speakers, Dr. Zerby.
Madam President, this evening, there are a number of topics on here, and we're going to address them in just a minute. So bear with me a second. So while the agenda for guests and scheduled speakers includes transportation update, furlough, support staff recommendation, and update on the fact that online progress of reopening schools, I felt that after getting the presentation together, we're better off to be rather inclusive. by combining all this together. So Mr. Regina will join us for for the update and Mr. Bicker will be available for questions on transportation. But this evening, I want to provide an update to the board as to our status of the reopening of schools starting September 8. And I will be talking about a number of matters, the status of Mathacton Online and related programming, the Mathacton Parent Center, technology, transportation, teacher support, athletics, clubs and activities, grants, planning for next steps and staff recommendation. So as per the educational delivery plan, we have enrolled all Mathacton students in the Mathacton Online program. This program is outlined on the district website and is inclusive of sample daily schedules with a focus on structure and synchronous instructional activities with Mathacton teachers using the fact of resources and the fact in curriculum. In addition to our primary instructional program, we are organizing the following on-premises related services center for students in need of physical, physical therapy, speech therapy, other related educational services spelled out in their IEP or 504 plan. There has been an interest survey sent out about a week or so ago and the commitment survey is being sent out to all eligible families to determine whether they want on-premise services, online services, or a combination of both. The survey will be out in next week or so. Additionally, additional academic help that is targeted called our student services center. That extra help is targeted during the school day as well as targeted in the evening for students and families to get get assistance. A grab and go meal service breakfast and lunch program for all students in the district is being organized and is is ready to be finalized. While looking at the feedback from other districts who had similar types of programs running in the in the spring, we anticipate that we would be somewhere between 250 to 500 families that are likely to take advantage of this based on, you know, similar populations of in similar sized districts. However, a survey is going out later this week to gauge more specific interests and this will help allow for this drive-up process to be organized to serve families centrally located at the Sky Duro Cola campus. In addition, we will continue to work on our backpack program. Right now, we are in the process of conducting our last summer backpack drop and I appreciate all the members of the board and their support in that process. So thank you so much. We have used a majority of our building supplies to support the spring and summer program and are working on efforts to gear up for the start of the school year and replenish those supplies. In addition to that, we are working on social activities. Those things are being pursued. We've made communications with our home and schools as well as looking at other avenues to help support the social emotional interest of our students and families across the district while we are in an online learning environment. An interest survey will be going out later this week or early next week on that matter as well. In other related matters to this start, the Mathacton Parent Center that was released actually this evening, this website provides families with information related to tools we will be using for virtual instruction through Mathacton Online. You'll find video explanations and tutorials to allow for parents to be better prepared to help partner with their teachers and in the education coming this fall. There will be some several live virtual parent sessions this week and over the next several weeks. So we ask parents to please go to the reopening site and check out the Mathacton Parent Center and sign up for any of those sessions that maybe you believe may be helpful for you. In terms of technology, in a communication to families last week, I spelled out a concern that was recently brought to my attention in terms of us getting our delivery of Chromebooks and other devices as originally anticipated. While in speaking with our, while speaking with our supplier, we have been able to orchestrate an additional 200 units out of the 1,000 plus that are outstanding at this point to be delivered sometime early next week. We are likely able to address grades seven through 12 completely and grades K and part of grade one with with the current stock of of technology. Grades two through six and part of grade one will be provided a survey to request pickup in the next two weeks who are not able to, for those folks, the families that are not able to furnish access during the first few weeks of school until our bulk order shipment is received. And I must tell you that we don't have a definitive date at this point in time. We are still working on a daily basis with our supplier. We are among several, actually many schools according for this particular supplier, not only here in Montgomery County, but in Bucks County and surrounding counties of districts that have not received not going to receive their their shipments in the anticipated timeframe. We will be able to support a similar number of families as we did in the spring with the the loners until the actual devices that we are have have ordered come in, but we will be short in issuing our one-to-one distribution by September 8. We will keep our parents updated on our progress and we'll we'll make sure that the board is apprised of this as well. In other technology matters, Verizon and Comcast have been communicating options in terms of connectivity, in terms of Wi-Fi hotspots or discounted internet access. Comcast now provides an option to allow for school districts to be billed directly for internet access for up to a six-month timeframe for families that qualify for free and reduced meals. I will be asking the board to allow me to bring that plan forward once I have more definitive information. But I think this would be a great opportunity to leverage some of the grant funds that I'll be talking about a little later in this presentation to help offset the challenges associated with families and gaining access to online instruction and access to the internet. So I, once I have more definitive information, I will be communicating with the board. Hopefully, I will have that in its totality. And if it's, if it's appropriate to get on the agenda, I will work with the board president to determine whether or not that is the the case for this this coming Tuesday for your consideration. But as of right now, I don't have all the details and I, but I do think it's based on what I know, it's it'd be a worthy opportunity to support our our families. In terms of transportation, North Monco Technical Career Center approved their hybrid return to school where grades 11 and 12 will return on premise and grades nine and 10 will be virtual for the first marking period. We will provide transportation from the home to each, to the tech center for our students. The transportation office is working on making those arrangements and communications over the next couple of days. Similarly, the district began communicating to our non-public school families regarding transportation. We will be providing transportation as we typically do for these non-public students. These students will be required to follow the approved health and safety plan that the board approved last month. An abbreviated version of, based on the transportation was organized as excerpts from the the comprehensive plan and shared along with a self-help, yeah, self-help check sheet prior to entering the school bus, which is similar to what we are asking of our students if they were to ride the bus and return to, return to school. And it also includes all the same masking requirements and procedures that we had put in place. An update on the stop-arm cameras, Mr. Bicker was kind enough to continue to follow up on this. He has an agreement from the vendor who is making the stop-arm camera service available at a basically a no-cost arrangement with the district. However, the agreement is in the solicitor's office and we're waiting for his feedback. We did speak with first student and they are willing to run, to do test runs as we proceed forward with the camera installs. The agreement, of course, will come before the board once reviewed by the solicitor. We received a letter from first student requesting payment for runs not being run during the first marking period. We have the letter with the solicitor and are waiting for his feedback. But as of this moment, there is no indication of a similar provision in the, in a future law that will allow us to recoup our transportation subsidy as we did this past spring. And therefore, at this point, the administration is not inclined to recommend that the board consider such a payment. We will be providing the letter in the Friday memo for your review and certainly we can have further discussion on it as the board sees fit. In terms of teacher support, there have been a number of communications to teachers with options for learning things like Google Classroom and other online tools to help support the instruction as well as we purchased full versions of a number of products and are still actually doing some of that purchasing as some of the requests keep coming in for, which will allow for features to be used by students and staff without issue. We have created a walkthrough process that will allow our technology integrators, our principals and other highly skilled staff to provide support for teachers starting day one. And we are adjusting the duties of a few staff people, approximately about three, maybe four possibly, that will act as online coaches to help help support our teachers in the delivery of their, of the curriculum. In terms of athletics, clubs and activities, the Pioneer Athletic Conference, this is the collection of schools that in the fact that participates in league play with for all sports, has determined that the start of the fall season will be adjusted or will now begin September 7th as compared to the original date allocated by the PIAA as August 17. They did this in order to allow for a number of schools that still have not made a determination in by their boards as whether or not the, the school district will proceed with allowing students to participate in in sports under a health and safety plan. As such, the Mathacton Board should be apprised that although we have approved our health and safety plan for return of sports, the debate between PIAA and the governor has spilled into a rather public debate with the potential of the PIAA making a ruling on whether to continue forward with sports as currently scheduled or to take the governor's recommendation to delay sports until January. If sports is approved to go forward, we have a placeholder on the agenda to pay coaches and to name coaches that that are currently in the recommendation stage but haven't been before the board for formal approval. So there, there are a number of coaches that may be in positions that, you know, are, they're not, they're not formally approved yet. They're not acting as coaches yet, but and and the teams don't know the names of those individuals. So certainly if PIAA says we can move forward and the boards continues to support our return to sports with our health and safety plan, we will have those items on the agenda in its totality for the fall season. If the season is delayed, I imagine that we have a number of issues to address, including the naming of coaches that as as one matter, but also what will our students and coaches be doing until that time? Ultimately, assuming that it's January as per the governor's recommendation. So those are some things we we need, we need to discuss. Certainly need to board's feedback on that and and certainly, you know, if we didn't approve contracts, you know, how do we compensate those people for that type of work considering that, you know, the season hasn't started. So we'll have to have some conversation on that. But we anticipate knowing more on Friday and will apprise the board as soon as possible. We also keep the public apprise of these developments and our coaches and players as well. It is important to the board recognize that there are some challenges, both from a legal perspective and from a past practice perspective that we need to keep in mind when trying to to address this. And and the best thing that could happen for everyone, in my opinion, is that the PIAA makes a decision on Friday and doesn't delay it any further because by delaying it further, it it makes our decision that much more difficult and much more harder. In terms of clubs and activities, the administration will be issuing a survey to district club sponsors. These are the employees in the district that hold supplemental contracts to act as advisors or what are called sponsors here in the fact and to help support student leadership and the clubs that that are that are run. And and also issuing the survey to leaders of groups of interest. These are groups that are formed with the support of staff but are not paid positions or are not on the point system for for being paid as a club. But both the club sponsors and the leaders of the groups of interest at the beginning of the school year will be surveyed to ascertain the sponsor's interest or the group leader's interest in running the club virtually or in person and to the degree and to what degree they plan on doing this. We're doing this for, because we have no way of knowing otherwise, you know, who's interested in doing what. And we want to ensure that we can support and provide the facilities and other needs of these of these clubs and also make sure that our supplemental contracts are properly accounted to support our students in in their aspirations to develop these clubs and move forward. In terms of activities such as dances and other similar events, please know that we are evaluating these matters and will communicate them closer to their actual traditional timeframe. But but a lot of them don't really provide a good opportunity for us to hold them as they would traditionally be held. I know that's common knowledge, assuming, but it's also important that you understand that you might be getting feedback as board members from parents that might not be happy with the fact that we don't have some of these activities running. So with that said, I have some, you know, some really, really good news in terms of grants. I'm pleased to recognize Ms. Tara Ricky, supervisor in the curriculum office, who was successful in her application for the ESER grant of $193,463. This grant was used to purchase Chromebooks. Also, I want to recognize Dr. Susan Angstad for her grant application award for the CARES COVID Fund Grant of $303,810. These resources will be used for personal protective equipment, technology and other student services. And lastly, it was announced by the county commissioners that they will allocate $15 million of their CARES funds to the Montgomery County School Districts based on the Title I formula, which would grant in the fact in $319,525. So Mathacton has, will have or has been awarded 800, nearly $817,000 to help address district matters associated with the pandemic. The next I just want to mention about planning for next steps and this is probably, while getting ready for the start of the school year is probably equally important in a, in a parallel conversation. One of the critical matters that we need to prepare for is our decision process for determining what happens after the first marking period, and that's about November 11. I am recommending and will proceed forward unless directed otherwise to leverage the pandemic team to develop and organize a high-level plan and run that plan through the Education Committee of the Board here in September. Based on that conversation and the feedback from the, the committee, the board committee, I would proceed to work through the details and present at the work session in September and seek preliminary approval to proceed forward at the end of the month. I believe that if all falls into place, as I would hope it would, and as we, as we plan as a, as a group of 10, we can get ahead of the November 11 date and possibly if we choose to, we could, you know, not only start implementing some of those, those, those processes if we believe appropriate, but we can also better communicate the next steps, subsequent steps of the future beyond the first marking period. And lastly, to cover all three areas this evening, the last one being this evening, Mr. Regina, it will be presenting our recommendation to the board, given the fact that we have determined that we will go all virtual for the first marking period, that's September 8 through November 11, and that the, there's a limit on the need for certain staff in the online environment. So with that said, I, I, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Mr. Regina to share his presentation and then we can open the floor up to questions on the matters that I had shared and anything related to the staffing. So, Mr. Regina, I'm going to give you access to post presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, are you able to see my screen, everyone? Thank you. Obviously, one of the more difficult decisions that we'll be making throughout this process, of course, is the potential reductions. Of some of our MESA and Teamster members within the district. As most you recall, last spring. Act 13 allowed us to keep our current staff in place while until June 30. While the situation was going on last spring. Act 13 was not extended. There's been no. Notification to us that we are going to get anything similar. And in doing so, many districts are going through this current exercise and and sharing some of the information that we're going to be sharing with you today. What we did was we had spoken to each of our administrators, talked through our support and Teamster staff to determine. Which positions are considered essential at this moment in time in the online environment and which may not be. To start, we are looking at our MESA reductions. This will affect potentially office assistants, recess aides, library assistants and secretaries. In each of the buildings, as you'll see here, the number of affected employees in each building. Two in Arrowhead, three in Eagleville, three in Woodland, three in Worcester, four in Skyview, three in Arcola. And five at the high school. One of the members on the Skyview list is actually a shared individual between Skyview and Arcola. So instead of writing three and a half in each. I just designated the one to the building they're in the most. This is a total of 23 staff members. Twenty-three of these staff members are eligible for full-time benefits, just to kind of give you an idea how this breaks down between full-time and part-time. Second slide is what our Teamster reductions would be. Each of these are it's not as specific as building. This is more based on classification. So we're sharing that with you in that context. We would have 12 custodians that would be affected potentially by these reductions and three general maintenance individuals that would be affected. Each of those individuals is eligible for full-time benefits and are considered full-time staff members. To look at projected savings, so there are a number of costs here that a number of savings and then obviously a potential cost. We have a salary savings for each group. This is the expected return. I have eleven fourteen. Dr. Zerby said eleven eleven. It'll be around that date. It's. I think eleven fourteen is actually a weekend date when I looked at it. But MESA would be roughly a hundred and twelve to a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars and Teamsters would be roughly. Hundred and ninety-four to a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars in savings. These benefit savings are specific to the individuals that would be affected. So when we review this list, this is a list that's reviewed by seniority by classification. And these benefits are pulled specifically from each of those individuals. Also, the unemployment costs are specific to the individuals. The unemployment costs, of course, would go against the savings that we would have. And it would present a total savings from each group, which would total a projected savings of roughly two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. Our process at this moment in time, tonight, of course, we're presenting this information to the board. Tomorrow, I'll be meeting with the MESA leadership to review the specifics of who these individuals could be, could be and who they'd be affected. We'll be meeting with administration and we'll talk a little bit about reassignment opportunities here in the next slide. On the 20th, we'll be meeting with Teamster leadership to review specifics. And if moving forward, we will start the meeting of the affected personnel. So it's it's important for us on the 20th and 21st to at least give the opportunity to speak with those affected individuals. Before they would see their name on a board agenda next week, as you could imagine. So we will be speaking with each of the affected individuals that that may have to be done in a large group setting. With the idea of at least notifying them and then setting up individual one-on-one meetings with me afterwards. This, we can certainly explain their rights and how unemployment work after the fact. But I I think it's and I think we all would believe it's appropriate for us to speak with them, obviously, before they would see it on a public agenda. At that point, August 25th, we would present the final reduction list to the board. Along with the appropriate action item and documentation as reviewed by the solicitor. Next steps for the process. So so one of the things that we looked at, of course, we we'd said that. These individuals would not necessarily be deemed essential to the function that we are working through with the online education model. We have, there are three different activities that will need to be staffed in the district. And what I would like to ask for the board's permission to do is to move forward with the administration. To look at potential reassignments of affected staff members. To staff the Student Services Center, the Related Services Clinic and Social Opportunity Activities. In doing so, it would be our effort to maintain similar hours, which would allow the individuals to maintain their benefits during this process. It is not likely that it will be everyone. I I need to be clear with that. But but it will help and it it would certainly be an activity that our administration would look forward to, to be able to help the staff members involved. Obviously, a next step would then be speaking with the association leadership as we spoke about in the last slide. It's very clear that we define what process we're going to be doing and to make sure that the affected individuals are correct. This is not something that we want to make a mistake on, so we want to make sure that everybody's on the same page and we recognize that the contract is being followed. And seniority, all the seniority numbers are very clear. We will then be speaking with the affected staff members prior to any names being released and then, of course, preparing items for the board agenda. Dr. Zerby, that ends my presentation for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Gina. So there there may be a number of matters that the the board would want to speak to. Certainly, you know, we can, we can start in any in any of the places, either the stuff I went over or the stuff Mr. Regina went over. But what Mr. Regina is asking for are are a couple of things. Obviously, there's no vote this evening. But we we would ask if there's any objection and we'll make this the first comment. I guess the first question is. Is there any objection to moving forward with with the process to recommend the furlough of staff? And then I think the second one is if the answer is no, there's no objection. The second would be, is there any objection for us to possibly look at reassigning people based on the needs from those other service groups? And and then that would that would kind of end kind of our understanding for for this evening on the staffing piece. With putting the names on the agenda for your consideration. Now, please know that, you know, Metta is not the only school district going through this process, and I think it's important to know that. Almost every district that has gone all online has has to consider this. Certainly, you know, as as. As of. You know, being being considered of the use of our tax dollars as well as us administrator being considered of that. We just can't let people, you know, be employed without, you know, substantial, you know, work duties. And that's kind of what this is as drawn down to and it's kind of what is happening across many of Montgomery County districts. So questions, we're glad to take them and try to provide whatever answers we can. Ms. Reese?
Um, Mr. Regina spent some time with me on the phone last week, so I will spare him repeating those questions, but. One, I have no objection to. Hopefully replay, hopefully putting these people in a new position, in a new position. But my question is, our our goal here is to get these kids back in school. So how does this affect? That? If at all?
Yeah, the what what would happen? A good question, Andrea. So what happens here? They each of these individuals will be notified of their recall expectation date. That's that's part of our requirements for unemployment. Right now, each of these individuals will be notified that they will be recalled to their original position. And and if it was done in a partial sense, let's say that we discuss a different model that we would come back to. That may not require all of all the people to return. It would be done based on seniority until the last person was recalled. Those recall rates are a little different than teacher recall rates. Teachers typically valid for one year. And then they have to notify the district if they want to maintain that recall right beyond that. We recognize this furlough rate will last longer than that for our support staff. The same law doesn't apply.
And one thing you had mentioned before, I believe, is something about voluntary. So is that off the table now or how does that work?
No, that's another great question. So the individuals that are affected. If we're able to reassign them, there's there's three truths that will exist. That that may not be something they're interested in. One of them is these individuals will have to come in person. To the school facility if we're utilizing them in the center of the clinics. The second one, it will not be necessarily the same hours that they're used to. And the third is it might not be the same job that they were doing. So as we share that in that information with each of these interested parties. We will ask them if they are interested in taking a voluntary furlough in place of that. Why we would do that is we may not be able to reassign everyone. But there may be more senior people that are not interested in doing that, so we would give them the option to take the furlough to save the next person on the seniority list.
Other questions? Mr. Navra?
Yeah, I mean, hopefully, we're only talking about a couple of months here. Is, you know, one of the biggest problems with where I guess, yeah, well, it's called its problem with furlough, people, right, is the loss of benefits. Is there any option for us under the law to continue to pay for their benefits during this period? Does that affect their furlough recalls? How does how does that work?
It it actually is an activity that that many employers discuss when they get to this point. I. I would say that there's probably a greater discussion we would want to have with that, only because when we typically get into a furlough process. It may not be something, although I I personally love that idea, I would caution the board that it would. Open up potentially a can of worms every time that we would furlough an individual. There may be a request to keep benefits. This is not necessarily an activity that we would want to replicate in the future, so I. It it may be a question more for Kyle. If do we expose ourselves, one, by any surcharge action that Dr. Zerby had referred to previously? And two, would it develop any kind of practice that would put us in a complicated position as a district? But it's it's a good question, Ralph. We did, just so you know, we did do a costing analysis for that. It's obviously not as not as positive and we it's potentially that we can take a loss at some level with that because our benefit, as you know. Benefits are relatively high.
Yeah, I think it would be, yeah, can we get it would be good to have, I guess, more clarity on that issue for us so we kind of know. You know, what what the impacts would be and what that means for us. Not just from a cost-saving standpoint here. But also in terms of, you know, what the impacts may be down the road. If something comes up like Act 13 again, that forces us to keep people. You know, paying people again, then we just need to understand what that whole picture is, but it's it's something I would explore. I don't know where everybody else stands on.
We could certainly get more information on the on what the the risks are to the board. In the district if we were to consider paying benefits. I think that's one thing we can certainly get. Advice on from the solicitor. Mr. Winters?
Yeah, I think it's a good question, Ralph. I question for you, Che, is the, this is an event change. So can they change their participation if they wanted to continue? On benefits and maybe move from open choice one to open choice three, for example, for the impact that has on them. When the on the total cost if they're responsible for a monthly cost related to medical, if that ends up being what happens?
Well, I I mean, question, if I can just just for clarity, are you asking if an affected individual? Would go on, would then be unemployed, would they be able to opt to open choice three for really for dollars out of their pocket? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, well, I believe we have to during this time allow them to stay on the medical for at their expense, right?
Right, that is correct. It's actually O B R A, so it's a hundred and two percent, I believe.
Yeah, so for many of those individuals, open choice three would reduce the impact on that to them. It's sort of like a life event. You have a life event with the pregnancy or whatever childbirth. Is this the same type of trigger point for them to be able to choose their selection they took in May-June to move to open choice three?
Tim, you would answer that question better than I. I'd open the floor to Tim on this one.
I do believe that that would be a life event that would change it. I can confirm it with the healthcare consortium, probably tonight or tomorrow morning. And get an answer to that just to confirm it, but I do believe that is considered a life event change.
Thanks.
And just just to be on the record, Dr. Zerby, I reluctantly support these. I don't know what else to say. There's nothing I could say that makes it even better, but I I. I understand your point, Che, related to precedent setting related to furloughs. But the reality is we don't know if it. The the medical in this particular situation is is very troublesome for many individuals at this point and most most of them shouldn't say. A a fair large percentage of the MESA employees are working for benefits. So, you know, it's it's really. It's a that's a that's a tough one, but I certainly understand your point, Che, but on the record, reluctantly support.
Yeah, so I I'm in agreement with a lot of what's been said already. I think it's important for us to explore ways that we can. Potentially continue benefits for employees. Obviously, without exposing us to a future risk and liability, so I think it's worth getting Kyle's input on that next week. And I I think that, I mean, this is obviously just another way that this whole pandemic situation is horrible and and is creating. A lot of problems and havoc for people all over. My one concern that I have sort of related to what Ms. Reese was talking about is the reduction in custodial staff because obviously. If and when we return to school, that is going to be an area that we are leaning on heavily. It's one of the the primary drivers behind our push to go virtual right now. I I don't want to see us in a position where we've decided we have a plan, we are ready. And now we don't have enough custodial employees and that's the reason that we can't reopen, so. I I don't know enough about that labor force to know whether or not that's, you know, is that an area where we have in the past had hiring challenges? Do we feel like it would be? You know, if if some of these people are fortunate enough to find other employment after a furlough. What kind of a position would we be put in then in in terms of finding replacements?
That's a great question, Kim. So it isn't necessarily a difficult group. To find full-time employment for, but it can be a very difficult group to find casual employment for. And what that means is we're net, we're going to have a number of individuals that need to take take off sick. Given a number of things that could potentially happen this fall. And it may be prudent for us to look at our Teamsters force as a potential substitute pool. For our custodians and then maybe potentially being able to keep some of them employed at some level. It's something that Bob Jones, Tim Barbogallo and I have talked about as recently as this morning. And we'll be meeting again tomorrow morning to to investigate that. There there are some limitations in their labor contract. That asks that we do utilize those individuals first before we go outside. For substitute pools, so it may actually blend together quite nicely to keep more of them involved. And and not expose ourselves from a a short of substitutes for that area. But I, to answer your question, I know I'm kind of going long-winded here, but I I wouldn't. It hasn't been our practice where it's been history that it's been difficult to hire for those positions.
Okay, and then, sorry, go ahead, Dr. Zerby.
No, I was just going to add that, you know, the 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 real challenge in this is. A, we we we're trying to make decisions that best protect the district. B, we're trying to make decisions that are best for the employee. And sometimes giving them work or partial work isn't to their benefit, even though it may sound like it's to their benefit. It creates problems for them. Uh, and they could actually, in cer- certain instances, earn more while they're completely unemployed than, than, than otherwise. So, um, it's, and that's really what they're trying to get to on, on a lot of this.
So on a sort of related note, then, um, in those slides that you presented to us, Mr. Regina, are we talking about, are they all FTEs? Are they, are, are any of them partial for both the MASP and the Teamsters group?
Another good question. There, there are a number of individuals that are at five hours. So we consider our part-time individuals at 29 hours or below. So any of those individuals that are at five to 5.5 hours a day would be considered below the full-time threshold. And those above that would be considered full-time, 30 and more. And of the full-time, I, I believe there was nine that would be full-time that were, that were on that list currently.
For the custodial staff?
Oh, I'm sorry, the custodial is, is all 15, I apologize.
Okay, so, so then the nine is across both groups. There's about nine that are less than a, a one.
There are, there are nine, I, let, let me clarify, there are nine MASP and 15 Teamsters that are considered full-time. Um, so there are, there are 14 individuals in MASP that are considered part-time. Please, please check my math there because I have, uh, I'm going on.
I'm not the one to be checking math.
There were, there were 20, there were 23 MASP individuals and I believe nine of them were full-time.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Other questions from members of the board on the, on the staffing recommendation? So, so seeing, seeing no objection to moving forward with putting the matter on the agenda. We will ask Mr. Regina, I will ask Mr. Regina to proceed with the schedule of activities that he had outlined. And we will certainly get you the information on, um, the, a legal interpretation of, of the benefits and how we might be able to provide that. And secondly, we will, uh, work administratively to see if a reassignment could work for these individuals as, as part of retaining them both on the, the total number of hours and, and for benefits. Again, Mr. Regina said that's not likely to be all the employees that are on this recommendation list, but it could reduce the list by the time you see it on Tuesday. Okay? Thank you. Now, in terms of any of the other matters that I, I brought up regarding the earlier part of the presentation, and I'm just going to jot them down real quick. If there's a hand, please let me know. We have anything related to MIFACT online, the related programming, uh, the, the parent center, technology, transportation, teacher support, athletics, grants, planning, next steps, and thus, and then obviously staffing recommendations. So any questions, Ms. Drummond?
I have a few questions, but I won't do the thing where I ask them all at once.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay.
I'm not completely exhausted yet, but, but one at a time would be excellent.
Okay, one at a time. Okay, the first question is about the lunch program. And is that for free and reduced lunch population or is that open to all MIFACT families?
All students.
Okay, thank you. The second one is about the Chromebooks. I just, if, if you could just, um, remind us or reiterate, like, what, what was the process? Because I just, I feel like I don't remember exactly what the whole process was with ordering them and when we discovered the need and everything. If you could just refresh.
Yep, absolutely. So, uh, on a, on an annual basis, um, we, uh, as, well, maybe people in the public don't know this, but we typically lease almost nearly a hundred percent of our end user devices. That means that if we, we have a Chromebook for a student is on our lease program where it's either a three or four-year lease. That being said, annually, there are devices that, uh, have to come back and be returned to the leasing company. And then we, uh, put an order in to replace those. And therefore we have, on average, on annual basis between $700, $800,000 in annual recurring costs that help support the one-to-one program and other technology resources in, in, in the district. So with that said, uh, it was about April, I believe it was April 24th, when the order went in for, uh, all the, uh, the Chromebooks that are typically as part of the, the, uh, cycle for, um, on an annual basis. And that's typically, uh, really when we, when we normally do that. And, uh, and, and so what happened, uh, last week was we were notified that we're not going to be getting, uh, or we don't have a date of, of what, exactly when we're going to be getting, uh, that large shipment. So that's about a thousand plus machines. I think it's eight hundred and some of, uh, of Chromebooks and two hundred and some of a, uh, of a Chrome tablet. Now, I did mention in my, uh, my, my message here this evening that we did receive notice today that the 200 Chrome tablets are, are going to be delivered early this, this, this coming week. And, um, I know, I know Doc, I, I didn't mention this, but Dr. Landis is already putting together a, a plan for, uh, the distribution of, of those and, uh, and other available technology over the next two weeks. So we're trying to get out ahead of all that and get it in the hands of, of our families as soon as possible. But, but generally speaking, uh, you know, Dr. Landis was provided information from, from our vendor. I can, if the, if the board cares to have the information, I can, uh, share the, uh, the, the most recent email today that we received. There's a list of other school districts that are also not receiving their technology on time. You know, it's, it's more than you can fit on two hands. And, uh, you know, it's, it's not, it's not, unfortunately, it's not unusual. According to the supplier during this particular period of time. So I can, I can certainly share that with you, but there are a number of school districts. But there were, there are districts that nearby us that got their, their supply or they're got their, their order. And there are some that aren't getting their orders, just like us at this point in time. So the reality of this is, the last conversation was that it's likely to be mid-September. But we don't have a definitive delivery date at this time, other than the, uh, the, the Chrome tablets that I had mentioned. Does that, does that give you the information that you were looking for, Ms. Drummond?
I, I think so, yes, but I, I guess I'm confused about what, like, what's not being delivered for our recurring, like, our usual maintenance Chromebooks? And then the, what we are ordering new, um, as a result of the online structure that we're implementing?
Right, so we, we, if you, if you recall, we put in our, our typical order. Our typical order would not include those things that have been returned for grade seven through 12. But we also put in an order at that same time in April 24th to take care of grades, uh, three through six. And if you recall, it was, I'm, I'm thinking maybe, um, it might be July, I don't know the exact date, but it might be like early July where we put in the, the purchase order for grades of K, K, K one and two. But we, but we all, we already have, while they were new devices, we, we already have some devices that were returned that we kept, that we're going to be able to, uh, supply to grades K and partially to, to one. But once the new machines come in, we'll be swapping those out with the families. Does that, does that make sense? So there's, so there, there are two, there are two orders. There's, uh, there's the, the order for the K one and two, but what are likely K and, and part of one is going to be already taken care of. The, the, it's, the issue is that, uh, you know, we don't have a date on, on that particular shipment either.
Okay, but, and then everybody else now who had in the seven to 12, they're set?
Seven to 12, we, we, we should be fine.
Okay, thank you.
So seven to 12 was okay and K and part of one.
Okay.
And so if you, if you think about this, we, uh, we, 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 we ran a, a, a program at the end of this past school year where we had a one-to-one issues from grade seven, uh, through 12. And we, for grades K through, uh, six, we distributed, uh, we called them loners at, at that time. And we were able to support the families, uh, all, all the family requests. So while I know it's not ideal and it's not what we had planned for, uh, I do believe that we'll have an equal set of need, at least temporarily, with the hopes that our shipment comes in, uh, in a reasonable period of time where we can do the swap out of those loner devices with the newly purchased devices. And we can move on for, for the rest of the school year with those.
Okay, thank you. Next question has to do with the, um, program that you were saying that Comcast is offering, where the district can be billed directly for people in, um, families in need for internet access. I just, I, if you, I just have a lot of questions about that. Like if the, just for a point of clarification for next week, if, I mean, it makes me wonder, do, do those families have to be already subscribing to Comcast? What kind of rate is the district being billed for that service? And is it only available if, if you're already a Verizon subscriber? Are you eligible for this? So I just have those kinds of questions around.
I, I, I do too, uh, but the most I can tell you right now, it's, it's, it's 9.95. Uh, and I, I don't know what the, if there's taxes and other charges, will, will be excluded for sales tax, but there will be other SLD, uh, schools and library taxes and other, other taxes that are, that are added on to help fund the eBay program, uh, that you see on your cell phone bills and your internet service bills. But there, we're not eligible to, to not pay those. But we, we, uh, we don't have all the details that you, you or I are looking for. So, uh, I, I just wanted to make everyone aware that, uh, hopefully I'll have that information. I can bring it forward, but it's, but it's my understanding from, uh, Dr. Landis that, uh, it will be, it will be made eligible to those, uh, students on our free and reduced lunch program. So we would provide them as an example, a specific code. They would provide it to Comcast as part of their order. And the bill then would be, uh, sent in a, in, in one bill, uh, on the list of, uh, individuals and their, and their rates. And we could use, uh, some of the grant funds, uh, to pay for those expenses. But, but more information is needed and we'll provide it.
Thank you. And then my final one, um, has to do with, um, clubs and interest groups. Is there a process? I know there was talk of some new, um, interest groups such as the Black Student Union forming. And I just wanted to make sure there's a process, um, for those to, to be put in place, um, for the new year since they weren't, at the end of the last year, they, they really weren't in existence. The idea wasn't.
Yep, there's a, there's a, there's a process in the, uh, in the manual, in the, in the clubs and activities manual. And, uh, they, like I said earlier, the groups of interest and the club sponsors will, uh, the group, group, the leaders for the groups of interest and the club sponsors will be given a survey to provide to us, uh, an explanation about how they plan or if they do plan or not plan to run the club or a group of interest and how they plan to do that either virtually or online. So we'll include all of those and any new groups of interest that come forward will be, will be addressed in them as per that, uh, uh, club's, uh, uh, manual.
Okay, I'm just making sure it's not too late for some new groups, just because of how the last year ended that we, that, you know, whoever wants to have the opportunity to form that can still do that this year.
Yeah.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Other questions, um, Ms. Ms. Aubrey Lasnais?
So, um, back to the devices. I, I wanted to clarify exactly how many short we will be for day one. So we already have devices in hand for all students seven through 12, correct?
Yes.
And we have anticipated next week, devices for K and part of one?
Correct.
Okay, so I guess I wanted to, to know exactly if we know how many short we will be for day one?
I don't know that now, but I can get you that information.
Okay, um, and I think it's important, um, that we not count our devices before they're in hand right now. I, I think that while we may have every assurance from a vendor that we are getting something next week or the middle of September or whenever it is, um, I think we've all experienced at some time or another through this pandemic where something that was supposed to be in stock or delivered or whatever has not been. But the entire supply chain is disrupted right now and, and demand is well exceeding supply. So I, I, as much as I would love to be able to say, yes, we're going to have these devices, um, it's really, um, it's a luck of the draw. Uh, you know, other districts were fortunate enough to find a supplier, um, to, to choose a supplier anyway, that, um, that was able to deliver. And we happen to be one of the unlucky ones that did not. But I guess I want to make sure that we also then have a plan. So what, like, what are we doing specifically to best allocate resources that families already have? So that, um, we can end up in sort of the same situation we did in the spring where everybody who needed a device was able to get one. Because I, I want to make sure that, that we're doing the best we can to allocate resources where they're needed.
Right, so it's, it's going to take, it's going to take, sorry, it's going to take careful communication on, on our part. Because what, uh, while I, I think that our, our families, uh, you know, reasonably communicated with us in terms of what they needed, we, we certainly had enough devices, uh, uh, at the end of the, of the school year to get, take care of all the requests. So there wasn't a request that went on field, on fill. I'm, I'm just concerned that, uh, you know, without clear communications, we could have people asking for devices that may not necessarily need it right away and might be a little bit more fortunate than others. So with that clear communications, we, we're currently in discussions about how to best, uh, you know, manage, uh, the request. So there, we're constructing a survey to see who needs the, the item. And then some of the thought is to cross-reference that request with our free and reduced lunch list to determine, uh, the, the greatest need, uh, and to potentially allocate things that way. But that creates a couple other challenges and we're still, was, be honest with you, we're still working through that, that dilemma. But I, I recognize that our communication with our families is going to be critical to making sure that everyone, uh, kind of does their own self-check, kind of like our health check. And say, do you, can you, can you, you know, work with us, uh, for the period of time where we don't have these devices? And can you honestly, you know, make do, uh, where others, uh, might not be able to or don't have access at, at all? We, we got to try to address that, uh, those needs first.
Yeah, I mean, I know that it would, it'll, it will end up with some repetitive efforts if we do it this way. But for example, we may have a, a number of families in grade seven through 12 who currently have a device that could very easily go without the device. So we could have them surrender the devices, um, and, until there's a time that everybody can get them. And so, yeah, it's going to require some kind of duplicative efforts where we have families turning in devices and then coming back in a few weeks to pick up another one. But, um, if it can get everybody to be starting on a level playing field September 8th, I think it will be worth it. And I, as possibly a silver lining, this may be something that we can use some of those displaced MASP employees to support the endeavor. It, it may be a way that we can kind of keep people working and have our students' needs met at the same time. Because again, while we're, we're hearing that we're going to get these devices in September, I, I'm not going to be convinced until we actually have them in hand. So I just want to make sure that we're, we're planning accordingly. And then on that note, um, I'm going to, I assume, because I know our teachers are working extra hard right now to prepare for the beginning of the school year. But, um, any classes that don't have 100% access for students just yet, I want to make sure that, um, we don't have parents panic buying and, and running out to Best Buy tonight to try and get themselves a Chromebook. I, I want them to, to have some reassurance that whatever the teachers are doing to start the school year will not require a device if devices have not been provided to students yet. So whether that be that, you know, they have packets and, and we go kind of old school for the first week or two or, or whatever. I know that our teachers are, are creative and working hard, so I'm, I'm hoping that that is part of the planning as well so that we don't, we don't end up with, with kids, um, not all starting at the same, with the same access in the same class.
Yeah, I, I, I understand what you're saying. My, my hope would be that, um, we could, uh, do the earlier part of your suggestion and, and be able to accommodate everyone temporarily rather than going old school. So, uh, that's why, I mean, we, we have, we have a lot to kind of think through in a short period of time. But, um, I, as soon as we believe that we have the right plan or the, the best communication together, we'll be sharing that with the board just to kind of get you, you know, to get your feedback. we'll be sharing that with the board, just to kind of get you, you know, to get your feedback on that. Because, you know, quite frankly, it's a, it's a, it's a bit of a challenge. And it's going to need all of us to understand the, you know, the, the framework for which we're going to be working in, in order to get this done and make sure everybody has access.
Yeah, I mean, obviously Plan A is to get a device into everyone's hands. But if there's one lesson that I think we've all learned from this pandemic is the importance of having a Plan B and maybe even a Plan C and D as well. So, you know, the, the more contingencies that we can have prepared, ready for September eighth, the better, I think, we'll all be. I think that's all I have for right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Reese?
Um, I, I don't want to belabor a point, but just to piggyback to something quickly on what Kim said. You know, the management of the devices is difficult. So if it's not realistic to ask everybody in seventh to twelve about a device, maybe we start with seventh grade who haven't been given them yet. You know, the seventh graders haven't been given a device yet because this would have been their first year. And then I believe it's whatever classes, maybe the sophomores were supposed to get their lease for the next three years. So maybe it's the seventh grade and the soph, and the sophomores. But I, I don't want to micromanage. I know your, your admin is, is working hard on that. My family, just for example, did not ask for a device because my twins shared. Obviously, they can't share in the fall because it'll be different type of learning. But one of them could take a, a device and one of them could say someone else could have it. I don't, I know there's things that need to be downloaded and things like that, but that's just an example. Um, and I said, and having said that, I think it's really important. I do have a question for you about next steps, but I think it's important to really address this community. I know there's a lot of people extremely frustrated, but I'm also seeing a lot of people working together to try to fix this and offering things like that and trying to figure out ways to help each other. So I personally find that to be very positive. There are some communities that are just arguing and nasty. And I'm not saying there's not people that are thrilled and saying nasty things, but for the most part, I've seen a lot of community effort trying to work together and realizing that this pandemic is really causing even more stress now than it was back in March, April and May. I think, you know, families are stressed, people's finances are stressed. And I just want to credit everyone who is being positive and credit everyone at Methacton who's actually trying. It's not easy to talk about furloughs and lack of devices. I do want it also mentioned, because I've seen some people complaining about this device issue. There are some districts who are still not, we are going to have a device in everybody's hands, K to twelve. And although there's a delay, there are some districts who are not doing that. So even those who are waiting. So it's important to note that Methacton is trying really hard. And there are some districts not, um, transporting, uh, their other students. And, and so I know that Methacton is trying its, its best. Um, speaking of that, you shared in our memo, because I think everyone's curious about the, what the next couple of weeks are, are going to look at, look like. And I know the parents and students will be getting that information. As a teacher, trust me, I'm still trying, you know, I'm working hard trying to figure out what my, my classes are going to look like. But I think people want to know that there's hope for November. So you shared with us in our memo some information about the PPE. Are you able, I don't mean to call you on the carpet, but I didn't hear much about that because I felt like the PPE was promising.
Well, it, it is promising. It's, it's similar to what I believe Mr. Jones had shared, you know, previously. But, but the, the, the main, major issue still is, and, and similar to what Ms. Aubrey Larson-Leece was referring to is, we were told that shipment of the electrostatic sprayers, the, the main devices that will help us to efficiently effectively address the population that, that, um, at the time, is, is, you know, geared to ship on a certain date. And according to all the conversations that Mr. Jones and I have had is, apparently the company that we're dealing with is the primo company for this type of, 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 of device. And, and, you know, will we get them on the date that they said? Yeah, hopefully we will. If we don't, we, we will certainly know that. And, and we'll, we'll apprise the board. But, but I think it's important that while we've given you those dates and, and, and the need for supplies, you know, our grants and, you know, knowing that those grants were coming in and, and, and some of them are, are a few weeks old in terms of, of, of already being, have accepted them. You know, we've been in the process of, you know, purchasing the, the extra PPE. I guess, Bob, you have, you know, you have, you know, almost six months worth of, a lot of the supplies to help us through a, a physical return. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. And we also have ten of the hot, of the electrostatic sprayers in stock now. So we're ready to go in the next two weeks with that to, for the distance learning for the schools that we will be opening and have students and faculty and staff in.
He's referring to the Arcola Skyview space.
Correct.
But, but we, we still have still a number of electrostatic sprayers outstanding that we need for opening up all the buildings. But any, I mean, any other, any other questions to that, Ms. Reese? No, okay, Ms. Hall?
I have two questions, and I'm sorry I was slow taking notes. You covered the North Monaco Technical Career Center plan. Could you just go over that again? You said eleven and twelve is, what model are they using?
Well, I, I guess if, if it would, if you'd be okay, I mean, Ms. Reese and Ms. Drummond sat on the, on the, on the committee or on the JOC board, maybe they could speak to it better. Ms. Reese?
I can't give you all details, Mary, and I know there's some small detail some people were asking me, but you, their, their website's up and running. But basically, juniors and seniors will be in person Monday through Thursday. Um, and the reason for that is they are so on hand, so in their programs that, you know, they, they need to be there. The decision was made for freshmen and, and sophomores for a couple of reasons. One is some of the freshmen can do some of the foundation work without being hands-on, some of the first things they can get through. Um, and the, the issue for North Monaco is, is a good one and a, and a bad one in a way. It's so, it has become so popular that they have over twelve hundred students, which is the highest they've ever had. So they tried so hard to get more kids in there, but it's impossible to be socially distant at that. And my biggest question to them was, the Western Center is opening, but the Western Center only has six hundred students and their building is larger. So that's the way it is for now. The only other big item is, you know, the, we are providing transportation, but they don't have to take the bus if they don't want to, and they will not have to pay for parking. And the other issue that came up is Friday is often for those students of co-op day, meaning they work somewhere. So Friday will not be in-person, um, learning. And the only other thing, I mean, that came, I mean, we had an information session last week and a, a voting meeting yesterday. One big area of concern is Mechatronics is a very popular program. And they were losing their instructor who had been there for a long time, but they were able to replace that instructor. All the new staff at North Monaco was already in this week receiving training and, and they're in, they're in, they're in good shape. But parents need to go to the website and then there's some schedules there for them as well as, there's some kids have very specific questions and, and they'll need to email. I don't know if I missed anything, Liz, or if you have any further questions on that, Mary.
I think, yeah, just, um, I don't know if you said it, Andrea, but the, the delivery is, grades nine to ten virtual, and then the hybrid for eleven and twelve, a hybrid model. So that instead of having five hundred students in the building on any of those days, there's going to be half of that, two, about two hundred and fifty students in the building Monday through Thursday, and then Friday is all virtual delivery for everyone.
Thank you very much. I did have a second question. I, in regard to the free and reduced lunches, I know some of our families might be in different circumstances than they were earlier. Have, and it might have been in a communication that I missed. Have we provided information to our families on how to apply to the program?
Mr. Booker, do you, do you know when, when typically is the free and reduced lunch application process initiated?
It's a direct certification program. Anyone can apply at any point in time, but typically there's a direct certification program that comes in and home and school reviews it if necessary. And then I would review it as a follow-up. But as I said, ninety percent, actually I'll be lying, it's ninety-nine point nine percent of them are just direct certifications when they submit the application.
So what he's referring to is the eligibility typically assumes that the Department of Public Welfare has your information and then submits it electronically to the schools to let you know that these, these families are eligible for free and reduced meals. So that, that's, that's the typical basis. And students that in the previous year have until October one to be re-certified typically. So when they start the school year off, they're already eligible, if they were eligible in the previous year. The only issue would be for new students to the district. They, they would go through the normal application process. And, but I believe that, that typically takes place when we start school.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Winters?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask you a question related to, I, I can imagine this PPE discussion is going to be the headline is that, oh, they have the, they have the PPE. But I believe the discussion last month, and, and there was obviously many dialogues about many issues, and that was only one related to the opening of the school at the beginning of the year. One of the other ones that I believe Jen and spoke to before was understanding resources in both the MEA and Mespa primarily on comfort level of what they're willing to do and not necessarily a comfort level of the, of the PSEA or our local MEA union, but the actual individuals. So I, I, I believe that four hundred MEA employees, it's hard for us to understand what we're going to do in November without having a complete understanding of individuals, how they feel at a particular time and certainly can change. Certainly, I, I changed my mind in the last six weeks as well. So my question, Dave, is just sort of open-ended. I know that we've had this discussion, but some, some districts did suggest a survey and surveyed their staff to try to understand what was going to happen, the dominoes would happen, which to me was the number one issue for, for the delay this year, in my opinion, for, for, for my vote. What has been the output of those? Has that provided any fruit to other districts? Or is there concern that it, it's not, it's not going to stick? Or what are the pros and cons related to trying to get a better flavor for November fourteenth or whatever the date is, if we're in a better situation as a county and a, a, a country or honestly, related to what we, what we are trying to do with public, public education here?
Yeah, I, I think, I think, you know, before I answer what we would do in the future, I think it's also important to know what some of those surveys by other districts, you know, meant to them. And maybe, Mr. Genie, you can, you know, chime in on, on that, because I know you're involved with those types of things with the HR, MCIU HR group. But, but, but I, I, I think it's going to be critical for us to have those, you know, conversations and not just make it a survey. What, what I mean by that is, we, we, we got to, we, we got to, we got to get a better pulse on what people are willing to do and what they're not willing to do. Given, you know, now that we have a health and safety plan in place and we start a, a, a school year off and we look around us, because it's not about, it, it, it's complicated, right? It's not just about what, as an individual, it's not about a, a union or, or, or the, the state association. You know, the state association could say one thing, but the local union could say another thing. But it comes down to the individual and the, the challenges associated with their household. And, and it's, it's until we have a real frank conversation about, you know, what they plan to, plan to do. I don't think a survey is going to, going to really, you know, provide that information in terms of its traditional format, you know, creating a couple of questions, sending an, an email out and looking for responses. I think, I think we need to, as an administrative team, you know, find a better way to kind of do an interview process about what are some of the key things that need to happen in order for our, our staff to be comfortable to the greatest extent possible in order to bring our students back to school. If, if in fact, Mr. Winters, you know, that's what the board wants. But I think I need to be able to provide some data for you to, you know, better understand that.
Yeah.
So that can be part of our, our, our plan.
Yeah, Dave, I appreciate the answer and I, I don't hung up on the, the term survey. Hopefully that doesn't, the point is getting some type of feedback related. And I, I, there is a fair amount of, of staff that are on the call today, which I, definitely appreciate, but I think it's, it's really important for the individual, Methacton, MEA and Mespa people to really come back with the, their feedback of what they're really going to do in certain circumstances. And it, it can't be necessarily, you know, I, I, it's not a, it's not an easy decision, first of all, and it doesn't have to be, but we need some type of guidance to understand. And I think the community needs to understand that delivering education, not knowing if you're going to have enough staff to deliver that education when you're trying to actually deliver it in different forms with less students in the classroom, it makes it even more difficult. So I, I just making that point, maybe it's obvious to a lot. But the reality is, we need, and many that are on this call understand as, as, as individuals that are going to be effective, we have to collectively make the decision and we need to know individually, you know, how many of the four hundred, three hundred and ninety-eight are going to come back? What type of comfort level they are coming back in certain areas, et cetera, et cetera. Same with Mespa, so.
I, I, I think you're absolutely right, but I, but I can, I can say this as well. Even, even at the moment of time you collect that information and you share it, the, the, the risk of all of this is, all, all we need is, you know, a matter related to the COVID nineteen to occur in, in a particular teacher's classroom. It, it's, it's, it's possible that I could lose, you know, twenty staff people in, in, in a week's time. And, and then those are, those are the risks. I mean, I, I know that you're all paying attention to what's going on in other states across the country. You know, there's, there's, there's all sorts of concerns that, and, and actions that occur, that are occurring, that are causing major havoc in the plans for returning to school. And, and I don't, and I don't want this to sound as though it's, it's, they're not justified, meaning that, you know, like I said, it, it, it's not about, it's not about the state association and it's not about the local association. It really does boil down to the individuals and what's important to them and, and how they are going to be able to manage through this. Because that's, you know, it's, it's kind of like the Maslow hierarchy of needs. If, if we're not taking care of their health and safety needs, you know, their ability to teach and to manage things aren't going to go all that well either. So it's a really, it's a really challenging time, but I, I'm not, I'm not going to not have, have the conversations. That's something we have to have because, because we, we need to know if it's, if we got fifty percent of the teachers behind us, ninety percent of the teachers behind us. And if we feel good about those ninety percent, you know, or if it's ninety-nine percent, well, maybe we can, we can risk another ten percent loss and still be able to make it through. But, but we're, we're going to stand a better chance of having those conversations once the school year starts. My goal is to try to have that for you, for your, your, your consideration in September when we take a look at, you know, what the potential reopening process might look like. Other items? Mr. Regine, did you want to add anything about those other surveys?
I, no, many districts did that, but I, I think Dr. Zerbi took Mr. Winters' point also. One of the things that, we had many staff members that certainly were willing to come back, but due to the school districts going back to an online environment, coupled with the FFCRA Act that's valid until December thirty-first, they weren't able to come back for childcare reasons. That, that became just as big of a hurdle as people being comfortable to come back. And as, as long as FFCRA is valid, that, that will, that will continually be a hurdle for us. So I, I think that'll be another one, where even when we're asking people if they're comfortable, they, they may even be challenged with the childcare component of that.
And one last point, just to real, just to make sure there was, that is not, there was no derogatory.
And one last point, just to real, just to make sure there was, that is not, there was no derogatory aspect to any of those questions. It's just about the being able to deliver and with an unknown variable that is the most. Considered the most important variable, so it is not, I know that there's a lot of mudslinging being thrown. In other areas around if what I think Ben Salem, et cetera. There's other areas, this is not, I'm not stoking the fire here, I'm just pointing out a fact that we really. It's the most important variable and it's very difficult to try to figure out how we're going to deliver something in in November as well.
That's that's fair, that's a fair comments. Thank you, Mr. Winters. Any other comments on other matters of Ms. Cancri?
No, and you know, I'm just briefly, I'll piggyback that just because the Pennsylvania Department of Education, as you all know. Put out that plan of how we have to really determine our instructional models. And being able to transition from one model to the other, so I do think that we can't rely on assumptions. Like you said, if you're going to identify those that are going to take advantage of the CARE Act or or this the Child Care Acts that you need to do. Is there ones that might need medical, you know, their doctors say that they might not medically be able to go in person. But to know where our staff will lie in their interest will allow us opportunities as well, so. It's offering them, are they going to come in at different levels, a soft reentry of one, two and three? So I really, I really do implore the pandemic team to go and really consider. Talking to the staff and knowing where their comforts levels are with return. Because if we bring a related service center in, that's great, it's a third party. But the next component of that is specialized teachers and the learning supports that are put into place. So we have to kind of start remembering that we need to put in some soft reentry, maybe if they do want to go in. Maybe there might be a half a day that we need to consider or hybrid approach, but the US Department definitely, it it urges. To know where staff go and where their comfort is for those transitionings and those are the three models we need to look at, so. I just asked for that to really work on phasing different phase levels for reentry. And then just to talk about the PPE, I will, I will push more that I think we need alternative options to be presented. And reviewed in the facilities committee and with the pandemic team. I don't want to hear just one product. I want to hear a backup product of one, two and three with specific arrival dates. And I want to see what's in stock in each building and what staff get trained on. Because if we are expecting the teachers to be trained on it and they're not in the building, we have to consider that also as a safe reentry. So I wouldn't want to see just one product. I do want to see multiple because moving into a pandemic and we stay within this. We might have had that same product again in six months, so we need to have options, so. Looks like my internet is unstable, so you might hear half of it, which has been happening to me all day, but. So those are just the two things, and so I really, let's review the reentry plan and and the education committee. And really break it down so that we can have a very clear concise idea. At whatever point we do, we reenter, we have to go through the discussions of whenever it will happen. Thanks.
Appreciate that. Any other questions or comments on the presentation, Mr. Ever?
Yeah, just a quick one on the final comments that Paul made and Chase said about the FFCRA leave. That problem related to other school districts staying virtual, going virtual is not going to go away. Unless we have a regional approach to reopening and, you know, unfortunately, the ten of us aren't going to. Be able to impact what Springford does and Norristown does or West Hickon does. But certainly there are conversations being had among among the administration at the county level, at the IU level. This is really a great time maybe for our our county leadership to step up and have some kind of coalition here. So that we we start to look at how we do this on a regional basis, rather than this type or local. Five hundred school districts across Pennsylvania thing that we have today, so. I guess my comment there, Dr. Zerby, is pushing you and your conversations with our superintendents, I know you guys are all talking about. How we can get back and do this safely, but maybe there's something that needs to be done, maybe from a coalition of board presidents. Maybe a coalition at the IU level, maybe something where our our county government gets involved, but certainly there's something more to be done here. Because otherwise that hurdle is not going to be able to be overcome.
Yeah, you you make a good point, Mr. Never, you know, I can tell you that early on, as we were a superintendent of of the. Within Montgomery County, we were trying to stay all on the same page, especially our North Monco Technical Career Center Superintendent. And, you know, you should know that, you know, my plan was very similar to that of Sourdough's and 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 I think. PV and and North Penn, they they were all, you know, kind of going in the same in the same direction. And and then I think they all kind of just kind of veered off in different places and different ways over a period of time based on. Just based on on, you know, the I'll I'll call it, you know, the 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 powers that be involved in in the process. It's not just, you know, it's not just us as superintendent, but, you know, we each have nine board members and and again. You have, you know, thousands of constituents that you need to, you know, respond to, so. It it's really, it's really turned into a really difficult position for us to keep everything going in the same direction so that. We could, we could keep that continuity, assuming that if we could keep all the schools neighboring to us, you know, on the same page. We might be able to salvage some of this daycare challenge, because, you know, there are there are teachers that teach in Sourdough and they live in the factory. And vice versa, but we we didn't, we didn't succeed in that. What would have really helped us in all of this, and I know that you know this and and so does the rest of the board, but, you know, specific. Determination but at the state level, say this is what you ought to do, it would it would have provided a great. You know, systematic ways for us to 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 manage the process. But that didn't occur and I'm not being a, I'm not going to keep beating on that drum. But but I will, I will do what you suggested and and at least make that a conversation of our North Monco Technical Career Center Superintendent. And see if we can bring, like you mentioned, you know, a board president coalition together. To talk about, you know, how how we might be able to, you know, reinvigorate at least that and then from there. Try to push out to other districts in our in our area.
And actually, that board president coalition is something that is already in the works. I've been in conversations with some other board presidents this week about setting up a Zoom meeting so that we can try to get more aligned.
Excellent, good, it's great to hear. Ms. Purdue?
I wanted to know if you can give a little bit of information on what.
Ms. Purdue, where it's hard to hear you.
Okay, just let me know if, can you hear me better now?
Yep, much better.
Okay, I'll turn my volume up. So my first question is about what parents can expect at the virtual, I guess, workshop for. K to twelve and also if we plan on having a similar workshop for the other grades. I think that's scheduled for Thursday.
That is, that is correct. Dr. Yukur will be doing a present, a parent workshop for grades, I believe, K through four. And in the communication that was sent out today on the on the the fact that parent center. There will be additional workshops for the other grades as well. I I just don't have the dates for those.
Thank you, and then my next question is really, and it's not really a question, I think it's more of a comment focused on the reentry plan along. Right along with what others have said, and I know last time when we discussed, there was a concern about staffing. I want to know if we have any concerns about that going into a virtual, starting off in a virtual environment now. I don't know, Jay, you have any? Additional to add to it?
I I I don't, I'm just in specific specifically to what Samira, I apologize, what which component were you looking at?
I guess what I'm thinking staffing in reference to teachers for the virtual environment.
We we haven't, so so we have had a number of moves that have taken place recently. You'll notice those on the board agenda tonight between the advisements from Dr. Zerby and some of the status changes, so we. We are in constant motion, getting people in certain positions, but we have not realized the number of leaves that we were looking at. A few weeks ago at this point, so we we do not have any concern with staffing the virtual environment at this point.
Any other questions from members of the board? Ms. Aubrey, what's news?
Yeah, it's not about the the virtual or return to school, it was actually about the transportation update. So obviously, it was not something that the board voted on or discussed. Transportation for our non-public students, because that is something that we typically do on a on a regular year. However, I do have concerns about the fact that we are still providing transportation. I I would like to get some numbers behind how many students per bus for our North Monco transportation. As well as how many students per bus for our non-public school students. It it's not something that required a vote because it's something that that we do typically do, but I I'm questioning the wisdom of it in our current environment. I know that in talking to Dr. Zerby earlier this week, we do have some non-public runs. We already know that our non-public runs are are most of the time are longer than our our in-house students. So we could have students on a bus for an hour or more. And we know that the length of time in in close proximity is a a big vector in how this virus spreads, so. I I do have some concerns about the fact that we're still providing non-public transportation. And I also am concerned about whether or not we even have drivers who are willing to provide that transportation service. I I don't think that this was something that other board members had necessarily raised. But it's something that I I did want to bring up as a point of concern.
We could certainly get you the information, we we will, we will likely be able to provide that for the non-publics. But I think for the North Monco, it'll take a few days for us to get you that information because I think we're in the process of contacting. The juniors and seniors to find out how we're going to be picking them up.
Well, and I I would not, I don't want to, I don't want to deduct the numbers that for students that are driving themselves, for example. I want to know, worst case scenario, if we were transporting all of our juniors and seniors to North Monco, how many would we have on a bus? And the same for our non-publics and as well as the lengths of their runs.
I'll just add to that, Kim, I mean, I I'm not telling you, don't ask for those numbers, but what I am saying to you is. I think you should ask for the numbers, but I I don't think it's fair not to deduct at all because. Ms. Partovich, who runs the North Monco Tech Center, said she doesn't have many juniors and seniors that take the bus. I'm not saying we shouldn't know what that number is, I think it's an excellent question, but I do think it's a little silly if there's fifty. Kids that could take the bus and twenty year old are only going to take the bus, why would we say there's fifty?
Well, if a student's car breaks down, we still have to provide transportation, so I just want to make sure that we know what the worst case scenario is.
And and I understand that, I also think it's some parental decision there, you know, we are not these children's parents.
No, I'm not worried as much about, I mean, obviously, I'm worried about the students, but I I also have concerns about the fact that we have a a driver on the bus. And we have, you know, it's having adequate ventilation on these buses can be a challenge. Particularly in inclement weather, I mean, you can't have the windows down if it's a rainy day and I I just, I want to make sure that we are. Fully examining the the wisdom of this.
And I agreed, and when I spoke to Dr. Zerby, I did ask, are there drivers willing or are we going to hear? That drivers don't want to do this. I did specifically ask that.
Yeah, and the other concern is the fact that some of these schools have moved up their start dates. So we wouldn't typically even be dealing with this issue on August eighteenth, but. Due to the the pandemic, some of these schools have opted to start earlier, which then put us in a position of having to go with the default option. Of providing transportation prior to being able to have a discussion as a board on the topic, so. I guess I I'm bringing it up in hopes that, you know, if other board members have concerns, we can talk about it. If I'm the only one, then I'm the only one, and and that's fine too.
If I could, so Mr. Bicker, do we have drivers for the non-public and the North Monco runs?
Currently, we have about thirty five runs that we would be running for the nonpub, parochial and private schools. And the North Monco, we do have, I have talked to first student and they expect to have all their drivers over thirty five come back. They are seeing some people that are not coming back, but again, the economy does allow them to hire more drivers and makes it easier for them.
I I guess the other concern, you know, is keeping a consistent number of drivers and keeping the same drivers with. With the same students and and really the best analogy that I can use for this is that, you know, if we have a snow day and we determine that it's not safe. For us to transport our students, we're not providing transportation to any other students on those days either. And I think that this, in my mind, falls in the same category, we are we are opting to not bring our students into schools. Because we believe on some level that it is not safe to do so. So I'm questioning whether or not it's safe for us to be providing transportation for other students as well.
Well, if we're providing transportation, I went over this with the solicitor. If we are providing transportation to North Monco, we are providing transportation for our students and as such. We are required to provide transportation for the private, public and parochial schools. Currently, I can let you know that there's thirty seniors that are at North Monco, which would be on a seventy two passenger bus. And there's thirty four juniors, so we would be at half or. You know, below our numbers, which is two per seat.
Yeah, I missed, I cut Ms. Cancri off earlier, so I apologize, I think.
I understand what you're saying, Kim, you know, but here's, you know, the the Pennsylvania Department did put strict criteria. Specifically about busing and transportation that we're going to follow and one of, like Dr. Zerby had said with the screening. It's a, if you, if you look at the protocol that was, is on their website, it's very exact, so when. You've got this, the public school, I understand that we're making this decision, but as a private school, the parents are aware. Of what the protocols are, the students are aware of that and 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 the and the drivers, so there's a level of. Risk benefit and at that point, they have, they know the protocol, it's being implemented and you, we have to have some reentry. And there is, as soon as we have an identification of a of a COVID case, there are strict guidelines. That the US Department, the Department of Education supplied also, so there's guidelines there, so we have to. We have to have reentry, they they know the risk benefit, they know the protocols, the procedures. I think that this is something that we, we need to follow.
I I I do appreciate the fact that these guidelines are in place and I want to believe that people will follow them. But I also know that if people were good at following the rules. We probably wouldn't be living in the the situation that we're living in right now, I mean, we've seen all over the news and all over the country that people are. Are breaking social distancing protocols, people are are, you know, making really poor choices and and having large gatherings and. And we've seen in schools across the country where parents are sending kids to school while they're still awaiting test results, so. I mean, yes, we can have all the guidelines that we want and we can believe that our our students and our our drivers are all going to follow them. But the reality is, we're dealing with human beings and human beings don't always make good choices. And I I say that including myself in that category, you know, we we don't always make the the right choice and when we're counting on people to. To do the right thing and it's, I guess that I am losing some of my optimism right now.
Any other comments?
Um, I just wanted to ask Mr. Bicker, and you may not know this right now, but for example, one of the examples of a school that pushed up their start date. Was LaSalle and I did not realize it was freshman only on Monday and I believe the rest of the students. Tomorrow, um, you had mentioned, I believe, twenty students that go there, do we know how many are using the bus?
I did not take a census yet, it's early for us to do that, but they are in a hybrid mode, so it's not. Every student every day.
Okay.
So.
Well, just if you could, at some, listen, I'm not, but since by next board meeting, we'll have had, they'll be in. School a week, if you could just maybe follow up and with the driver of that bus, if there's any issues or if. Parents have decided not to use it. if there's any issues or if parents have decided not to use it, I would, I would be curious about that.
Any other comments on the matters that I reviewed earlier this evening? If not, I appreciate all your comments. And we have a number of pieces of information to get to the board before next Tuesday. So I appreciate that. And I will now ask that we move on with with the agenda. And I'm just going to put that up on the screen. Bear with me a second. So that does end the the August eighteenth updates as they're listed. Please know that I will come back again next Tuesday. Likely, there'll be some, hopefully, some updates on athletics and some other progress that we make as admin team on many of our matters. So I'll just provide you a brief update on those specific things. We'll go over the reports for the committees. You see the list of, I mean, superintendent's report of the superintendent advisements. And please know that we have scheduled a Mad Hoc group of members of the board to address the DEI matter that we had spoke about the last two meetings. And we'll likely be listing that under under here as an update on a regular basis as as that small committee of the board and I meet to to address those matters. In terms of public comment, there'll be public comment, both sections at the next Tuesday's meeting. We'll be suspending the the board policy as we have been for the online process. Then we get into the fiscal items. Mr. Bicker?
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. This month, for your approval, we have the list of bills, treasurer's report, there are no budgetary transfers. We have the recommendation for changes in casual on-call rates for six different positions. PlanCon K approval for G O B series twenty twenty, PlanCon K approval G O N series twenty twenty, the student activity count, the closure of the class of twenty twenty, as well as the opening of the class of twenty twenty-four, which is per board policy six eighteen. And we have one change order, which is a change or approve the change order. A C H M, number one, is a credit for four hundred and eighty-five dollars and twenty-three cents. This is the high school roofing project. This is a credit for them not performing the work on the press box, which was outsourced to another company.
So so just to the board reference, all these items, but the actual student activity accounts were before the finance committee and their at their regular meeting this month. Are there any specific questions on any of these matters? And yes, Mr. Navarro?
Yeah, I just, Tim, I know we talked about it in finance, but I think it's important to reiterate here and then probably again next week, because we'll have a different set of people listening. But the percentage increases for the casual on-calls is pretty hefty. Can you explain why?
It's been, I'm going to say, what was it, over thirteen years? Two thousand and seven, I think, was the last time the rates were adjusted. So we're just kind of getting back up to where our peers are in relationship to what we're paying casuals and call.
Thank you. Any other questions on fiscal matters? Seeing none, I will move on to personnel items. Mr. Regina?
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. A number of items for the board's consideration this evening. We have two resignation for retirements, one for professional, one for classified. Both names the board probably recognizes that, you know, they're both services from both Patty and Diana have been amazing. These are exemplar employees, and we will miss both of them significantly upon their retirement. The next is an employment of an administrator, Matt Walsh, as our director of curriculum. Many of you have the opportunity to meet Dr. Walsh, and he'll be joining us once we are communicating with with Hickin now and determining his exit strategy and entrance strategy here in the district. Next is employment professional. We have five change of status items. Some of you may wonder what's the difference between change of status and advisement. Advisement matters are those individuals that are reassigned by the district. Change of status items are those individuals that have interviewed internally and have chosen those positions. So we we do indicate that the difference in those items to the board. And it's, so those of you that are wondering, that's, that's why that separation is there. We do have one item for sabbatical leave and three items for supplemental contracts, including the one placeholder that Dr. Zerby had referred to earlier for fall coaches. And the last item on our agenda for personnel is a volunteer list. Thank you.
Um.
Any questions for Mr. Regina?
Just two questions. One is the new hire, the Hamilton. Is that a teacher that our students are familiar with that? Is that a L T S? The name sounds familiar to me, but I don't.
Hayden has been a very loyal L T S to us for a number of years. We're very excited to have Hayden now with a contract. Thank you.
I thought so, but I I wasn't sure. I'm just, you hear kind of in the teaching world about long-term subs not always being hired. And it's, and it's nice to see somebody, you know, getting a contract after that. And then my next question is about long-term subs. So I, and I apologize, I can't remember how it works. Do we ever get a list of our long-term subs that are hired? Or no, because they're really S T S employees? I can't remember.
That's a great question, because it's very different from district to district. We're one of the few districts that utilize S T S for our long-term subpositions. Typically, that's a contractual item, so there are many contracts around us. At the moment that you get to a ninety-day sub, those individuals will then become part of the bargaining unit as an L T S, which is, might be something, I'm not sure about spring four, but it might be similar in that contract, which might, might be why you see a distinction between the two. So you you will actually not see L T Ss on board agendas because they never actually are employees.
Questions for Mr. Regina on personnel lives. Miss Canker?
Had a question about the the sports. I just, I'm not sure. So I know, I know, I understand what situation we're in. Can you, can we still provide perhaps supplemental contracts for fall coaches at a different level if we stay within an off-season workout virtual? Is that a discussion we can have? And how do we have that discussion? Or where do we have that discussion? Do we have to have a PAC or P I double A in order for fall sports to occur virtual? Or like we're doing with activities as well? Asking the coaches, would you be interested in doing six-by-six distancing out in the field? I'm just curious. Is that just an option? And if we can address that, you know, and in what venue?
I think, yeah, I believe what Dr. Zerby had talked about in the beginning about there being some conversation about that. I, I think first, first of all, it would be important to see what the P I double A decision is on Friday. Because it likely would be a, probably a lengthy conversation we wouldn't need to have if if they decide to continue with fall sports potentially. But to answer your question, we do not have a mechanism right now to pay for preseason workouts. Matter of fact, you know, there are, it actually happens quite often where a coach may be around the entire preseason, but then for for one reason or another elects not to coach once the season starts. And and we have no mechanism to pay them for time prior to the season. It is our, our season definition is defined by P I double A, and that's what we have paid for. It doesn't mean that that's ultimately what we'd have to do, but it just means that we don't have a mechanism to pay for that now. So I think that would require a discussion before we would would investigate that.
Yeah, Chair, I'd really be interested in having that discussion. And I would lay my bias on the table in front of everybody. I coached in high school for six years, and I hear you. We're trying to thread a needle here, right? So let's, let's assume P I double A comes back next Friday and says, no sports. I don't think us saying, well, no sports, no pay, is the right answer for these coaches for a couple of reasons. A, they've been working through the summer, they've been doing these, you know, sticking to the rules, doing all this other stuff. And I would also argue a little bit, and again, I know there's some, maybe my argument isn't as solid as I would like it to be, but there are going to be a lot of kids that need a coach in their life if 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 sports get nicked, excuse me. So I would, irrespective of what the P I double A decides next week, yes, you, they say full steam ahead, easy decision, right? It's a layup horse. I think we should start at least framing out and prepare for a tolerance of if they say no. And I would, again, I'm just throwing stuff against the wall. I would pay our head coaches what we owe them, perhaps a half or a quarter or a third of what our assistance we owe them, because they've done everything we've asked them to do over the last, I don't know, thirty, forty days. And to think that a coach starts working when the season starts and stops working when the season stops is not really true anymore. It's a three sixty-five day gig. And I would think I would want our seniors to have a head coach in their life, especially if they're looking for college decisions. I'd want some guidance there. And I know our coaches would do it anyway. I know that they're coaches, that's what they do. But I want to treat them, I want to treat them as an us, not a, not a versus, that kind of mentality. So that's my two cents, and that's where I would be coming from on this.
Yeah, I think there's a, there's a number of things that we're going to have to be prepared for if the answer is we're not having sports until January. The first question is, you know, the period of time between, let's say, July one and now, or next Tuesday, or this coming Friday. And then what about the time thereafter? What are, what are we actually doing with the students? And is this all coaches? Because while, while, you know, being a former coach as well, I, I can't agree with you more that, you know, there's a lot of time involved in this. And the, but the challenge is, as Jay mentioned, there's not, there's not a mechanism to pay people. And it's, it's not as simple as saying, well, we're going to just pay these people and not these people. And we've got, we got to, we do. The problem with doing things to help people because we should creates a significant amount of other problems. And and we got to come up with a solution and present it to you. So I don't want to belabor it today, but I hear what you're asking, and I recognize the request. And we've been talking about it. I just don't have an answer for you right now.
And I hear you. I get it. We're all, we're all saying the same thing. But I would parallel it to the quote-unquote COVID exception we made for days off at the end of the year for our guys. We made a COVID bank. This is, all bets are off, right? And this COVID is not precedent-setting. This is, we're making it up as we go along. So I don't want to, I don't want to handcuff us and say, oh, my gosh, if we do it now, four years from now, somebody's going to say, well, you did it for them. I want to park all that nonsense and just say, I'll fight that fight for years if that makes any sense. But again, we're saying the same thing. I just want to, I want to stand up for our coaches a little bit because our kids are going to need these coaches in their lives. And, 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 all right, I'm done.
Understood. Your comments, Mr. Lawrence?
And I don't know if anybody has any more comments on the sport, so if they do, maybe we continue with that. But my question is related to, to the class size. And usually in August, a big portion of our discussion is, is the enrollment and the ever-evolving changes that happen in August. So is there a possibility next week we will see some requests for eliminating or moving or adding based on class size specifically in the elementary grades?
Yeah, I think you, you should be referring to the class size list that I provided in last Friday's memo. We should be able to, we, and I only provided that as a, as a document, not with any reference for your, for your complete understanding. So I apologize. But what Mr. Regina and I can do is make sure that we kind of script it out to what those numbers mean and how we plan on dealing with some of the overdues and unders that that are apparent on that, on that sheet. So we'll do that for this Friday. And then we can certainly follow it up with any more conversation that the board would like to have. We do have, we do have those things solved for, it's just that it's not apparent on the sheet. Other questions on the matters of personnel? Ms. Aubrey Larson is?
Yeah, I may have missed it. But, Mr. Regina, did you talk about the sabbatical leave? Is that a medical or educational leave?
I did not. My apologies.
That's okay.
Yeah, I mean, that is a medical sabbatical. The, the professional development sabbatical deadline is, has passed. So the next professional sabbatical that we would be able to offer would be the spring.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Any other personnel matters? Seeing none, we're going to move on to the next item, curriculum program. As you recall, these are two books that are part of the music program. They are up for your consideration on Tuesday. They were made available for thirty days in the district office and as part of a policy. The next item is the inter-schoolastic athletic schedule, typically on an annual basis. The schedule is put before you for adoption. Any questions on matters of curriculum programs? Seeing none, we move on to policy. Please know that on Tuesday, there are six policies for second reading. These are for action by the board. Are there any questions on matters of policy? Seeing none, under other gifts and donations and trips, we don't have anything in this moment in time. And dates for board members' calendars, we've also included in this the Act forty, Act thirty-four, PlanCon, the public hearing. And I just want to, you know, for clarification purposes, I just want to make sure that the board recognizes, anybody on this call recognizes that the PlanCon of hearing will occur both in in person, meaning at Yarcola Intermediate School, and online. So we will, we will be streaming the local part of the hearing from Yarcola to other participants. So if board members want to choose to join online, they can do that. If they want to be in person, where I will be, and likely KCBA will be, and likely the stenographer will be, you're welcome to, to join us there as well. So either, either location will allow members of the public to provide documented comments on the, on the matter associated with the construction of a new Alhead Elementary School. Any, any other questions for us before I turn it over back over to the president, president for old, new business and courtesy before?
I just wanted to remind people that tomorrow is the rescheduled education meeting because it's not on the, the, the meeting that had to be postponed due to the tropical storm.
Ms. Hall?
We did receive some questions in property committee regarding the PlanCon hearing. So I, I think there was questions as to how would people submit their, I don't know if you'd consider it testimony or what the correct word would be, and if written submissions would be included in the record and things like that. Do you have information, or is that better for Kyle next week?
I will get, I will get that information from our, our, from KCBA about how the, typically, it's by, it's used typically a verbal comment. But I just want to confirm before I say it's not, one thing's not acceptable or another. So let me confirm that, and I will get that answer from the board.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, Ms. Aubrey Larson is, so I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, does anyone have anything for old business this evening?
I don't know if it's old or new, but we kind of skipped over, not, not on purpose, the, you know, hiring a new curriculum director. I just wanted to thank all the staff that has had to do it during a pandemic. The administration, building for every administrator, every staff that's working over the summer has just had a tremendous, tremendous amount of work. And when I spoke to a couple of them, they said, we didn't sign up for it, but we did sign up for it. It's our job. And I really appreciated that. And many have been doing triple and quadruple duty due to the fact that we are a admin down and we're somewhat, are always a little bit, you know, I don't want to say shorthanded in that direction, but. But admin has really kind of, um, you know, said, okay, we're going to hold off on a director of this and a director of that. We're going to get our budget together and they've had to really do, you know, quadruple times. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. And, um, I know everybody is anxious about the beginning of the school year, but I have a lot of faith that the work being done behind the scenes will show. And that, um, I, as, as nerve wracking as it is as a teacher and a parent, I, I really do know that September eighth will be, um, it'll be a positive experience and we all need to keep that in mind. And I appreciate this board being positive and working together, even if we all don't agree. So thank you honestly to all the admin. And if we could get that to be determined date for another admin starting soon, that would be fabulous. I know we need to officially vote next, but you, Dr. Zerby mentioned, uh, Dr. Engstad and Ms. Ricky and at the beginning of the, of the meeting, but all, all admin and everybody who works over the summer. So thank you.
Anyone else with old business? Okay, how about new business? Mr. McGinnis?
Guys, I know we have a thousand and one things right now, but as an outcropping of the last couple of, uh, the book session last month in the school board meeting where we had some of the, the recent alumni, uh, to talk about our mascot. I, I think it's time that we formalize some plan to at least discuss it. And I'm just simply talking about, uh, removing all of the, um, logos that we currently have that, that refer back to, uh, the Native Americans. I, I'm not saying change warriors, um, as a crowd, the Thackton Warrior, a class of eighty-seven. I was really moved by some of those kids and what they said. It's candidly not something I ever really, really thought about until they brought it up. So I don't know what machinations we have to go to in order to do that, but I think it's high time we start having that discussion.
Yeah, I, I would second that. And I think, um, I, I know that our ad hoc committee of, um, our diversity, equity and inclusion, um, task force representatives, I guess, um, will be meeting, um, I believe this week to, um, to begin to shape some of the, the framework of how that committee is going to work moving forward. So perhaps that's something that could be talked about in, in that group. As, as, you know, what's the best path forward? Cause I, I do think that it's a conversation that needs to be had. And, um, whether or not that's something that we, we discuss in September or, or January, or, you know, it, it's, we, we just, the important thing is that we set a date and we, we set a plan in place and start moving forward with the discussion. So yes, I would, I would agree with that, Drew. I think that's a great idea. Anyone else with new business? All right, so at this point, we will open up for courtesy of the floor. As I stated earlier, we require members of the public wanting to make comment during courtesy of the floor to pre-register by five o'clock today. We had four, um, four members register to speak this evening. So, um, I'm going to start here with Mr. Brian Earnshaw. Mr. Earnshaw, you are in, so whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Brian Earnshaw, Lower Providence. Excuse me, just wanted to follow up on a question I had at last month's finance committee meeting and it relates to the bond offerings. And hoping that Mr. Bricker and/or Mr. McGinnis would have an answer. Um, and it relates to the bonds that were sold as a premium. And I was trying to understand why they were sold at a premium. Generally, a premium results when you price bonds at above market interest rates. And if that is the case in the, on these two issuances, I'm wondering why that happened. I was wondering if anybody could answer that for me?
Hey, did, did you have anything else?
Yeah, I just, just, just some, some kind, I, I ended a meeting midway through and one comment where we talk about busing and I don't know all the facts behind it. But, uh, one of the comments was concerning from the board president was that it, it seems like we're trying to go down the road of making decisions to control decisions made by parents. And, and that's the message I got from that. And I just think that's wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. So next I have, um, one second. Okay, next I have Jim Mollick. Go ahead, Dr. Mollick, whenever you're ready.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Thank you, let me know if I cut out on you. Could you, at the, at the end of my comment, could you tell me who's on the pandemic advisory committee? It's not on the website, tried finding it, can't. If you could help me, I'd appreciate it. You mentioned that, um, people were making poor choices by having large gatherings. So I'd like to maybe give you a situation here. I was told that three Math Acton students were kicked off the baseball field while they were playing. Three is not a large group. And at the same time, the tennis courts were fully occupied with, you know, four people, whatever, a court. So that didn't make a lot of sense to me. As this board places political activism and activity above sports and learning, I'd like to talk about Ms. Larsonis's concern for large gatherings. The district permitted a large gathering of several hundred activist protesters to use school property as their home base in violation of the governor's order. According to Chair Larsonis, the permit was granted for the welfare of the community. But the permit only contained name and contact info. No fee was paid, no purpose was listed, no hold harmless documents were obtained. And, um, it was a violation of Board Policy seven oh seven by allowing the permit to go through in light of, of the restrictions which prohibited posting, distributing or handing out literature and/or having a meeting of a partisan political group. This Black Lives Matter protest and, and the group itself is a political partisan group who, whose funds flow through Act Blue to the Democrat Party and Democrat candidates. The permit never should have been granted. And, um, if it happens again in the future, I believe there'll be a challenge to what you guys do. Regarding the COVID nineteen, everything I've read supports the coronavirus is not going away. It's here for good and no matter what you do, people are going to get it. The virus mutates, a vaccine may only be sixty percent effective and have to be repeated on a yearly basis. And unless you wear eye protection, masks are useless. And according to Dr. Fauci, you should be wearing goggles. That's not going to fly with kids at school wearing goggles. So no matter how much you clean, how much PPE you have, kids are going to get the virus regardless of when you start school. Now, I guess my question is, um, you aren't bringing kids into the school because you don't think it's safe. Why did you bring kids into the school each and every flu season? Considering the flu is much more dangerous to kid, kids than COVID. It's actually five times more dangerous. You know, I'm not sure who's on this committee who's advising you, but I don't believe you're getting appropriate advice. You know, if you're, if you're, if you're not going to impose these restrictions during flu season, I, I certainly don't understand the rationale for all these restrictions when the mortality rate for a zero to seventeen year old is zero. And most are asymptomatic with mild symptoms. I would concentrate on protecting teachers and let the kids go back to school. If you could tell me who's on that advisory committee, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mollick. That information is on the website. If you go to the roadmap, roadmap to reopening, there is a link there for the pandemic team. I'm not sure. I, I don't know that there's probably about fifteen to twenty names on that list. So I, I don't know them off the top of my head. So next I have Amy Kenworthy. Okay, Ms. Kenworthy, you are in whenever you're ready.
Good evening. My name is Amy Kenworthy and I'm a third grade teacher at War Suster. Thank you for, um, hearing me tonight. I want to thank the board and administrators, um, for making these tough decisions. I just wanted to say how much, um, teachers value and appreciate our aides and custodians. They are committed and work very hard to support our students and staff. And some of them have been working very hard, um, over the summer to get our classrooms ready and to make sure that the buildings are ready for us. So they will be greatly missed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kenworthy. And then finally, um, our last speaker is Ms. Jenny Geis. Mrs. Geis, I'm just looking for your name. There you are. Okay, Mrs. Geis, whenever you're ready.
There. Now I'm on, all right. Thank you so much. Yes, I always enjoy to spend an evening with all of you. I really want to reiterate what, um, Amy Kenworthy said in that as a teacher going into school to help with setting up for this virtual learning, our instructional assistants and aides have been invaluable. Even though many of them got notification through an email for Dr. Zerby a couple of days ago that they might be furloughed, they are still showing up this week to help, to assist, to help prepare for everything. As Mr. McGinnis said, I am one hundred percent in agreement that kids need a coach in their life and that we need to stand up for the coaches in children's lives. Mespa and Teamsters are some of the coaches in these children's lives. They are there for the kids. This is my twenty-fifth year I will be teaching kindergarten. I have had a PCA who started in kindergarten with a student that is now currently in high school and she is still his PCA. She is definitely a very positive coach in his life. And I'm sure would really appreciate continuing to be a positive influence in his life. I have had in kindergarten instructional assistants and PCAids who, when they are through assisting a child they are assigned to, will help the other children sitting nearby, especially in things like zipping coats, um, helping them pack up. I have had students who come in from recess absolutely ecstatic because one of the PCA's or aides taught them how to swing. It wasn't a skill they knew before they came to school. And this person was the coach in their life. And when you're five, learning how to swing independently is as exciting as a touchdown on the football field. We have had custodial staff who on their own time will draw pictures and leave them in my kindergarten room for various holidays because their hobby is an artist. I have had custodial staff who will come down to help with the midday bus run. If there's a snowstorm, they come down to make sure that is shoveled and ready and will even help walk the kids to the bus in inclement weather if they are available. Other custodial staff, usually they get called down to kindergarten when a child has thrown up or missed in the bathroom and they might have to clean up some bodily fluids, which is not exactly exciting and fun. Those exact same custodians have come in on a day where our math lesson is learning about symmetry and we're folding coffee filters and cutting out snowflakes. And you could imagine after forty-four five-year-olds have cut out snowflakes, that the floor does look a bit like it has snowed inside. And the response has been, doesn't it look like you had a fabulous day at school today? Those are all examples of times the Teamsters and Mespa have helped in person. Please give these people a chance to make that kind of impact in the virtual learning environment. I am one hundred percent confident that every single one of our Mespa and Teamsters that wants to work virtually will make those exact same heart touching commitments to be a coach in these children's lives. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Geis. Okay, so I believe that takes care of everyone for courtesy of the floor. Do we have any comments from the board before we adjourn? Mr. Winters?
So Tim, can you answer the question? We've, we've had this question bounce around several times. So I know that at the last finance meeting, we asked about the bond premium and being provided the, the final schedules. My understanding from what you had provided us before is that the, because of what, what limited choices are out there, there was a premium, the, the bond, uh, premium was one point eight eight versus one point eight on our refinancing. So can you explain that in the principle of, uh, why we, uh, were able to get additional funding for just a small basis?
The premium that is paid is for paying a higher interest rate. However, the higher interest rate that we're looking at was in line with the other bonds that we were getting. It also gave us about two point five, I can't remember the exact number off the top of my head right now, of additional funds that we can utilize now and time value of money for the school district. It made good sense.
Any other comments from the board? Ms. Drummond?
Yeah, I just have a question. Um, I, we've gotten, um, a couple inquiries about ensuring that all the documents that we're sending virtually are appropriately translated for, um, families where English might not be their first language. And I just, um, I just am raising that just to make sure that that's happening and, you know, and I guess inquiring about the process related to that.
So we have, we have a number of different ways to handle that. But one of the most recent ways is that, um, with the, we're calling it a soft launch of the revamp of our website, that, that soft launch includes a translation service right inside, right inside each of the documents. So that's one new feature that when we, we're ready to announce that, we'll, we'll announce. I mean, people can use it right now, but we, we didn't publicize it because we still have some work to do on another, a couple of other matters. Additionally, Dr. Engstad, through the people services offices has, uh, third-party services. We do have some, uh, translation languages for our, um, uh, a school messenger, uh, platform, which we just enabled. And, uh, and the last part is, um, I can't think, there's, there's one other piece that we have. I can't, I can't remember off the top of my head, but it, it, it certainly is something that, uh, we, we've come, uh, to, uh, accustomed to, uh, trying to make sure that all those communications include, uh, the languages as they're so defined within our student population within the district and communicate that.
Thank you. Anything else from the board?
Oh, and, and just to add with that, like even on our website, you have the app where you could translate your entire website information for any language accessibility. So our website is able to do that. So I just wanted to add that also as well. We have that dropdown option.
Okay, anyone else? I'll take a motion to adjourn. Figured I wouldn't have to ask twice. All right, thanks, everyone. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you, good night.